Councilmember Pulapati.
Here.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Councilmember Budge is absent. Vice Mayor Terry is also absent. Mayor Gatewood.
Here.
And I would just like to acknowledge that Councilmember Budge will likely be joining us later this evening.
Excellent. I'm gonna go ahead and Stacy read the meeting, recording and playback schedules.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrokable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Wednesday, June 23rd at 6:00 PM and Saturday, June 26th at 2:00 PM. The meeting can also be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. A DVD copy is available from checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the City Clerk's Department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Excellent, thank you. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Cyrus, can you do the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. You please join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
What better?
There we go. We, you know, there's only three of us, it's easy to harmonize. All right. And I'm gonna call on Mark Shetler from River City Christian to give the invocation. Mark.
Thank you very much. Would you join me in prayer, please? God almighty be, thank you so much for this day and God for your faithfulness and your work in creation all around us and for our community. And God, I want to thank you for our city council and the staff who helped to provide the services that we need in our community. And we ask, Lord, that you would give the council wisdom and guidance as they go about the business of the city this evening. God, we pray that you would protect them. We pray for those that are in need in our community. Lord, that you would always remind us that we have a responsibility to care for those that are suffering, those that are lonely, those that are hungry, those that need education. We pray, God, that you would remind us to be compassionate and caring towards those individuals. God, I do just ask that you would be honored and glorified in the work that we do. Bind us together in unity. And I pray these things in the Savior's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Pastor. Good evening. All right. Presentation. I'm gonna call on Cyrus Abahar for recognition and presentation. Cyrus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to take this opportunity and thank two very important community partners tonight for their work and their assistance during the COVID-19 and response to COVID-19. Let me start by acknowledging Sac Metro Fire. Sac Metro Fire has been an important community partner in response to COVID-19. They provided assistance not only to the members of the community as well as the city staff and the city employees with COVID-19 testing by setting up different test sites, rapid testing, and a great deal of work that they did in the community to help our community members in dealing with COVID. I believe we have Chris Bestall with Sac Metro Fire here tonight. If I would like to, or Scott, Captain, Scott is here as well. And thank you for, thank you so, so much for being here. And I would like to ask, ask you to say a few words, please.
Absolutely. First of all, we're so proud of the organization that Metro Fire has. Unfortunately, Captain Bestall wasn't able to make the meeting. He's working on that fire in the Antelope area. It's wonderful to know the relationships that Metro Fire has developed with so many wonderful leaders such as yourself. We really appreciate the honor to be able to be recognized for the work that we've done and not just your community, but the Sacramento County. A big special thank you to Michael Skaggs, Danny Blasky, Kristi Rivera, and Sean Post. They have been amazing in, in all the work that they've done. We're very happy with the partnerships that we've built and we were very grateful that we could just be able to help you guys out and anybody else who needed our, our services. So it's, it's an honor to be recognized by the, the city council tonight. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Captain Perryman. Really appreciate all the great work and support you gave to the city and to members of our community. Okay. And Mr. Mayor, if I may also, I would like to acknowledge another important community partner that helped us with, with some of the COVID vaccination clinics. We had, I believe we have Dr. Kowana Carter and Nancy Bowie Thompson who are here tonight. And they head up the efforts, the vaccination clinics, supported their Passau, their Passau Heights Vaccination Clinic. And we reached out to Dr. Carter and, and Dr. Thompson when we felt that there was a need for additional vaccinations. And they stepped in, in a very, very rapid timeline, in, in a very short order, and set up a vaccination clinic here at the city hall. And I'm very, very proud to say that our city hall has been a very, has been an active vaccination site for the last few months. And they have administered as part of the vaccination clinic here at the city hall over 1,500 vaccines. And the return rate, one of the amazing things that in data and statistics, the statistics that I receive, the return date on the vaccinations have been over 90%, which is really an amazing, amazing rate for, for the members of our community. And they have been very successful. And it was, I was able to attend some of these vaccination clinics and saw them firsthand. I saw the incredible, amazing work that was being done by both Dr. Carter and Nancy and the amount of time and effort they put into it. I also would like to acknowledge our staff members who, and many of the volunteers from the community who stepped in to help the Passau Heights Clinic with the vaccinations. But it has, it was quite successful and it had, it has been a great partnership, similar, similar to the partnership that we've had with Sac Metro Fire. So at this point, I see Nancy Bowie Thompson on the, on the line, on the call. If I can ask you Nancy to make a few comments, please.
Great, thank you so much for having me. I know Dr. Carter, I think she's either waiting or will be joining soon. But I did want to thank Cyrus and especially Maria. You know, I think I called on a Friday or a Sunday and we were able to turn around that clinic within a few short days and get over 385 people to come, which is incredible. I have been so impressed with all of the volunteers from the community and the staff who have stepped up day in and day out. This isn't easy, right? At this point in time, this population that we're trying to reach are those that are the hardest to reach. Those that are, you know, didn't have access earlier, that don't often have medical insurance, that are, those that are vaccine hesitant. And so to have over 1,500 vaccinations administered in such a short period of time towards the end of the vaccination cycle. We are one of the last community clinics standing. Most have closed. Most have closed as of weeks ago. And so I appreciate this partnership with the city of Rancho Cordova for my community because even the last day, you know, saying goodbye to the volunteers, knowing that we may be back in August to help vaccinate the children for the school year in the fall. You know, I still run across people that are nervous. And so I'm very excited to continue to work with the city and the staff because I know that this fall, as we get ready for school, there'll still be a large population of children and their parents who still are facing great access to care and access to vaccination issues. And so I thank you for the fast turnaround and for all the support. And it's really been lovely to see the community come out. Every person that we vaccinate is, is a life possibly saved. So thank you so much and I look forward to continue to working with the city and hope to see you all again in August as we get ready to gear up for the school year.
Thank you, Nancy.
So really quick, before we move on to all my partners, I just want to say a personal thank you from the city. Nancy, thank you so much for stepping up. And I know you'll never get Mrs. Carter to come in here and accept anything because she doesn't want any recognition. But the fact that you're willing to help out the least of our, our citizens and the homeless and those types of individuals is amazing. So thank you so much for being the, the one to bring vaccinations into Rancho Cordova. And Cyrus, thank you to our staff. You guys did an amazing job and this is what we care about. We care about our citizens and when we step up, the partners just came up with it. So Scott, thank you so much. Nancy, thank you so much for really stepping up for us.
And I just did want to know that, you know, to those at home that may be watching is, you know, the city of Rancho Cordova as a partner, put their own resources to help with this clinic. Same goes with Dr. Carter and myself. I wish we could say that we had, you know, county or state or federal support for these vaccine clinics. But it really, it's without the support of cities like the city of Rancho Cordova or school districts and private donations from our volunteers that we wouldn't be able to do this. People think that we're funded by some federal account or a state. This is truly from the community. So I think the city of Rancho Cordova and all the volunteers, you know, from buying lunch or a snow cone or, you know, a gift bag or just answering our phone lines are all volunteers. So we couldn't do it without the partnerships like the city of Rancho Cordova.
Thank you, Nancy. And Mr. Mayor, if I think it's noteworthy to mention that our, some of our zip codes have a vaccination rate of over 79%, which is one of the greatest, I believe it's the highest rate of vaccination in the county and much greater than the average rate that we have seen in most of the states. So it's through this effort and other efforts that we have made with our community partners that we've been able to reach this level of success.
Amazing job.
So thank you.
Great job, guys. Great job. All right. Okay. So we're gonna move on to public comment. I'm gonna leave my favorite person's stage, you get a chance to get everything going. All right. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not, not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference. If you want to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of the screen. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom and telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under provision of California Government Code, City Camera is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it is demonstrated to be of the emergency nature or the need to take immediate action rose after the agenda. Gentlemen, everyone that's written in to us that we write their public comment, this is your chance. And if something's not on our agenda, this is where we guys want to hear from you. So I only see three hands, but I know a lot of people wrote in. So this would be your chance to actually talk. So let's give you a second. Let's get everyone to raise your hands or call in and get ready because we want to hear from you. So at this moment, I'm gonna call on Stacy, if you wouldn't mind. Let's hear from our citizens.
Okay. The City Clerk's Office has received approximately 47 written emails with regards to public comment. So I'm gonna go ahead and read those names off first. These public comments are also available on the city's website if you would like to read them. But the City Clerk's Office has emailed them to the city council for their review as well. So, and then I'll turn it over to Zoom and to the telephone. So the City Clerk's Office for public comment received an email from FISA Mugal, Marina Faute, Dawn Craft, Nancy Marsh, Susan Santello, Amber Verdugo, Carl Hawes, Stephen Fisher, Linda Robinson, Jack Fontez, Karina Suárez, Dan, Gil Ruiz, Deborah Cortez, Mary Lou Bear, Patricia Medina, Brianna, Vicki Lee, George Aldel Spurger, Simone Brinkman Robinson, Angel Ball, Lisa Pappas, Robert Koshat, Valerie Nipschild, Susan Taylor, Jen Rayleigh Miller, Cheryl Hart, Derek Pearl Beavers, Judy Grammuth, Florence Florence Skiodas, Tabasim Sarani, Kenneth Nahigian, Judy Gustafson, Riley Vinyu, Kenny Ganti, Andrew Meckler, Jacqueline Konig, Janine Anderson, Michelle Martin, Kristy Constantine, Tammy Van, Anthony Crichetti, Robert Van Cleef, Isa Abdul Rahim, and Autumn Eberhart. Those are the written public comments that we have received from the City Clerk's Office. Again, they're posted on the city's website if you would like to review those. We do have a number of public comments with, in Zoom and on the telephone. And Mayor Gatewood, I'll start with the first one. And that is telephone number 916-804. You will have approximately three minutes to speak and then I will let you know when your time is up. So we'll start with that first caller with area code 916-804. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, this is FISA Mugal in Lincoln Village. I'd like to share some information about a vaccine clinic. Tomorrow, Tuesday, June 22nd, between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM, there is a vaccine clinic for COVID-19 vaccine at George Washington Carver High School. And that is near the corner of Rudier Road and Lincoln Village Drive. It will apply for all ages 12 and up. So if you still need a shot, please walk in and get a vaccine. Also, I would like to leave a comment, a general comment regarding the direction that the Civic Center is headed. I really would wish we would take a lane because it's sounding more and more that rather than a civic center, we're getting a housing center with, you know, a little flavor of civic center in it. Rather than sprinkling it in, I would love a civic center to be the main feature, you know, with all kinds of civic amenities. I have nothing against housing whatsoever, but I did really want a fantastic civic center, not just, again, not civic amenities sprinkled in. So if we could revisit that, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, FISA.
The next speaker is Michael Harris. Michael, you'll have three minutes. Michael, I think you're on mute.
Yeah. All right, thank you because I was on mute. My name is Michael. I am a resident here. Well, we call it Mather Base in the city of Rancho Cordova. I'm in the lobby because I thought we were past the notion that we had to do this thing on Zoom. We could talk to each other and relationships are so important. And if we could eat together, talk together, we could probably work through some differences. So today I'm here talking about Juneteenth. I mean, we were able to have a flag fly on the California State Capitol and were able to push through a regional director for the National Juneteenth Observers Foundation Board. And I'm happy to say that I could leave that effort and come home and do some things in, in my home. I'm like 50 years active. You know, when I was in high school, my mom drove me around and showed me what civic responsibility is about and I'm still doing that. So again, I'm, I'm, I'm in the lobby and on the land where the African founding father of California owned 35,521 acres and some person, hopefully it was a human being, decided to burn down the sign we put on the highway 50, some over 15, 15 years ago with bipartisan support. My teachers thought that that was important and sometimes you gotta take a little extra time to talk with people that don't agree with you. But you have, you know, a lifetime to live with them, so you don't want to have some enemies. But the signs burned down, the, the, the burning down up at Negro Bar. There's destruction of the house with William Alexander Leidestorf, which that's the name on the highway sign. And so Juneteenth is a, a very important thing. And, and, you know, what may have, you know, carried some weight and finally got it a holiday is that there was only 700,000 people of European ancestry that died in the Civil War. Roughly half free for the Union, roughly for slave states in the Confederacy. But as a veteran, we honor all those that died on the battlefield. And, you know, me personally, you know, we should have had more die and maybe go faster and ended the war a little sooner, but that wasn't the case. And so today, we're looking forward to closing out this month and then this will be my final, you know, day as a, as a regional director of Juneteenth. Nine states and six territories. This will be it in terms of, you know, that position. But Saturday, 11:30 at Riverbend Park, not too far from where Leidestorf's farm ranch was. And I, you gotta tell me because I don't know about the time. I'll talk all night. But the idea that Juneteenth is a day where we all could celebrate freedom because some people have no idea how people of African descent, particularly in this area, were here since 1844.
Your three minutes is up.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I'm gonna leave these flyers in the lobby and look to see y'all when I can see y'all.
All right.
Thank you.
Hey, Michael, come up to the top story. I'll get those flyers from you.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead, Stacy.
The next speaker is Helen Wayland. Helen, I've just unmuted you and you'll have three minutes. Helen, are you there?
Perhaps we might pause until the mayor returns if we might have momentarily lost the quorum.
Okay.
In the meantime, let's check if Helen can, we can hear Helen.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Helen. Okay.
Okay. My, my computer thought you were alien, unless you're online. I have a long firewall.
We're, we're all ones and zeros to the computer, so.
Yeah.
We're just waiting for the mayor to get back online and.
All right, I'm here.
Oh, he's here.
Well, okay. I have two issues. One, we've had a lot of fireworks going off on the Chira Grande area. I'm talking about overhead fireworks.
Already.
Already. So I tried contacting Animal Control to find out who would be responsible in this area. Well, I got the runaround. I got sent over to Front Street. And I called Rancho and Mr. Matt.
Yes. Go ahead.
Would you, Helen, do you, do you think that you might be interested in speaking later on on, in our agenda? We do have an item on ordinance relating to the display of illegal fireworks. And when you said overhead fireworks, you may well.
With animals.
I'm sorry?
This is, this is dealing with animals. I just mentioned fireworks because animals start, get scared and they go running. And then they show up at shelters. And most of the people in our area assume we go to Bradshaw. No. And so I called Matt to see what we do. And Matt at the city office told me, we're not in his jurisdiction. And I refused to answer to him. And I said, I want to talk to your next line in the chain. He says, no, you're not. You're not part of Rancho Cordova. You can't be heard. So that's, I was sick. Then I called Front Street and Front Street said, you aren't part of us. You have to call Bradshaw. So then I called Bradshaw and Bradshaw said, you're part of Rancho Cordova. So we have a real issue here. We're Never Neverland because we have a Sacramento zip code and we've kind of been, and we're annexed in until the people get to vote where they want to be. So that's an issue that needs to be resolved because pet owners don't know they have to go to Front Street. They don't know where to go. The other issue that I'm, I'm talking about is history. We have history in this area that's not, as far as I'm concerned, being recognized. We have people who are of Asian descent that are not being recognized and we have interments of them in the Rancho Cordova area. We also, on last Saturday, two Saturdays ago, I went up to Folsom. They did a marvelous job with Juneteenth. They have a building named after Leidestorf. They have a square named after Leidestorf. They have a street named after Leidestorf. And they have a gorgeous monument that shows all cultural people on it. And as I told the people at Folsom, I said, well, it's nice that you have all this stuff for Leidestorf, but Tizadobe was in Rancho and, and on the, in, on the, near the library, on the Sacramento County Rancho area. And I said, I'm, I'm very proud of what you've done. So I just can't understand why these areas, why haven't we done something to really recognize the man? Because he's the beginning. He's 1844. Granted, the, California became a state in 1850, but we go roots back further than that. We have Asians that came and developed this area. We have African Americans that came here. We have nothing that identifies after the H building was burned down that recognizes the multicultural people. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Autumn. Autumn, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Hi, this is Autumn Eberhart from Cordova Meadows. And I oppose the current Civic Center plan that includes mostly single-family residential homes. And I have a couple of questions about the planning associated with the Civic Center. The Civic Center Evaluation Committee currently consists of 13 people and most of them are city employees. And I'm hoping going forward, we can add some more community members to that Evaluation Committee, those who are very invested in this project as a space for the community. I was wondering why does the council and city employees think that housing is the insurance policy for our Civic Center? And then I was also, I saw in Griffin Swinerton's proposal that they stated that they were going to conduct pop-up activities to test possible uses of the Civic Center. And I was wondering when those would be taking place and if we should wait to decide how the, um, wait to decide on how the property should be used until those are conducted. the, wait to decide on how the property should be used until those are conducted because that's going to be really valuable information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi Stacy, I'm not sure why I am a speaker.
Because your hand is raised.
Did I raise?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, that was an error. But hi, everyone.
Hi, Maria, thank you.
Happy Monday.
Happy Monday.
Okay.
All right, so let's go ahead and move on.
Mayor Gatewood, that's all the public comment that we have.
Yep, I see it. All right, let's move on to council reports. And I'm gonna ask Siri to go ahead and give us her report.
What report? It's so hot outside. Okay, welcome to the hot, hot days of California. And, you know, I'm really thankful that the city has opened up the center for cooling areas. You know, I think going forward, this is one thing that we need to maybe keep in mind, Cyrus, that is this something that is a standard option? Then when it hits hundred-plus days, we will be opening City Hall as cooling centers? If that's going to be standard practice, then our residents will know that, you know, hundred-plus, this is the place to go. So thank you for that. You know, we just had Juneteenth, you know, as an immigrant, there was so much for me to learn and understand and so much more. I seem to have so much more exposure on what it was and what happened. And finally, we have a federal holiday out of that. This is something we do need to recognize as a city. You know, I've seen that the Cordova Community Council, actually, the Folsom-Cordova Community Partnership had actually planned for a, you know, Juneteenth celebration on the seventeenth, which they had to postpone to the twenty-fourth due to the extreme heat. So yes, we will be celebrating the Juneteenth as well and that will be on June twenty-fourth. And today is International Yoga Day, so if you've not gone out and stretched, well, just breathe. That's all my update.
All right, thanks, Siri. Let's go on with the only other, go ahead and get your stretch on. Let's go on with David. David, go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we have had a very interesting weekend in Rancho Cordova. We hosted our first large, large track meet in, in quite a while. And you guys have heard us talking about this for a couple of meetings now, trying to get everything arranged, some new facilities in place and a big event pulled off. So this last weekend, Rancho Cordova was host to the Golden West Invitational Track Meet. Now, this is a famous track meet. This is a track meet that typically has a lot of future Olympians competing in it. It has sort of a storied history in that way. And while the numbers aren't final yet, I can tell you that there were about twenty-seven hundred athletes who were in town for that track meet. There were a thousand-plus cars parked that day officially at the event. There were other officials and coaches and other folks who didn't, didn't park quite in the same spot. So the attendance would have been even larger than that at Cordova High. The event ran from eight AM to eleven PM roughly with, with all those kids in one day. It was a really hot day and everyone had a lot of fun. And as a, as a coach, I heard a lot of interesting commentary from, from people. I heard people talking about these are the best facilities they've seen on sort of this high-level track meet circuit that they're on. I've heard people talk about this is an unmatched opportunity to, to host future events. And I heard a lot of people talking about next year and their, their desire to come back, including the meet organizers and, and officials with USA Track and Field. So this was an enormous rush job to, to get everything in place. And I want to thank staff at the school district for facilitating this. They, they did yeoman's work in about a six-week time period, if I'm not mistaken, Cyrus. And of course, on our own city staff, Stacy and Megan and Cyrus just did a tremendous amount of work trying to make all of these pieces come together, including relocating a discus hammer cage from Sacramento State to Cordova High School within about a ten-day period before the meet. It was, it was extremely well done. People were very happy with the, with the facility. I think our organizers on the ground at the Rancho Cordova Track Club are certainly to be praised as well because they're the, they're the folks who made the connections and saw that this was possible and sort of brought it to the city's attention. So this has been a great collaboration between the school district, the city as the, as the main funder of this activity, and our own new Rancho Cordova Track Club that started as sort of a byproduct of RCA. So at the Rancho Cordova Track Club, I want to specifically thank Josh Gruber, who is the head coach for the RCTC. He is the cross-country coach at Cordova High School. He's also one of the track coaches at Cordova High School. It's his vision and his connections that sort of brought all of this together for our community. He is ably assisted by Dennis Lamontia. Dennis, you probably know from, from Little League history here, he was president of the Rancho Cordova Little League. And he has now become our go-to guy for the management of sort of the backside of the house of youth sports. So he's the guy who makes sure the website works and gets the account set up and files the tax returns and deals with the finances, et cetera. And they were joined by Jennifer Littit, who you've heard of before. She is a very dedicated mom and businessperson in our community. She's got kids all over public schools in Rancho Cordova. And she is sort of the third leg of the, of the triad of the Rancho Cordova Track Club. You know, that organization only started about two months ago. And they have, I think, about sixty with a very soft start because they wanted to be careful about how they started. They've got about sixty families signed up now as Rancho Cordova Track Club members. So they're out there, even as we speak, I think there's a practice going on, going on tonight. And they were the official hosts of this track meet at Cordova High. This next week, we are going to be hosts to the USA Track and Field's Top Eight Meet. It is a, and sort of an unusual name because normally this would be a Junior Olympics qualifying meet, and that's what they would call it. But because of COVID disruption this year, it's not. They're just calling it the Top Eight Meet. But that meet has over three thousand youth participants, including about thirty or forty kids from Rancho Cordova, might be over forty actually, who are getting a chance to participate in this for free and a meet that they normally probably would not have access to. So we've got a lot to be proud of and a lot to look forward to. Everyone's talking about future years, future meets, and there are certainly a lot of other opportunities to, to expand on this partnership that we've launched with the school district and the Rancho Cordova Track Club. So that consumed a lot of my weekend and it's consumed a lot of emergency efforts from Cyrus and our state staff, our school district staff. I just want to publicly thank them again for, for all of that because it was really a great outcome and there's a lot more great stuff coming. There is even a meet, which we are likely to land, I think at this point, that is a live masters meet, so that's an adult competition. It's live on ESPN and it'll be coming from Cordova High School. So that's a pretty, a pretty cool opportunity. We have a pretty good chance of getting it at this point. Let's see, other things I should mention. I attended a Sacoag Board meeting last week. I gave you a big update two weeks ago on Green Mean Ghost, I won't repeat myself there. The effort continues. We think this is the, the first opportunity where the Sacramento delegation has actually gotten together to do something as a group. And that's, it's a little shameful to say that that hasn't happened before, that our delegation to the state legislature hasn't gotten together to work on a regional project before, but this is definitely it and they're, they're all there and pulling in the same direction. So with any luck, we will see some extra resources on the, on the transportation infrastructure side to help us meet those greenhouse gas goals that have been set for us. I attended Regional SAN last week and I've been pretty active in the National League of Cities efforts, trying to get the House and Senate advocacy packages together. So we've got hearings going on in the Senate, hearings going on in the House for that every five years or six years transportation bill that goes on. There are earmarks in there that are, that are valuable to us in Rancho Cordova and the community and the region, but there are huge policy issues at stake that we're also working on. So I've spent a lot of time with NLC on that front. I attended the Rotary Awards Dinner last week. It was great to be at an event with people. It was sort of maybe the last of the COVID-style events where everyone was outside and sort of separated. Everyone was also vaccinated though, so the virologists, I could say, was, it was a pretty safe event. But it was nice to sort of get that feel of the, of the community event coming back. So that was, that was a great event. Donald, I attended a Folsom-Cordova two-by-two last week. I wanted to let everybody know that Easter Seals, the organization, the Northern California Organization of Easter Seals, has left a location on, I think it was Hurley Drive in Sacramento, and they are relocating to Rancho Cordova. That not only brings us great nonprofit jobs to our community, but it also gives us an asset that can add to our, our growing numbers of assets sort of on the nonprofit side. And I think it'll, it'll add to some of the wonderful activities that happen in Rancho Cordova. So welcome Easter Seals to Rancho Cordova. And finally, Rancho of Athletic Association. The Hall of Fame activities are going fast and furious. They are working hard to choose this year's inductees into the Hall of Fame. And our youth leagues are also going strong. Little League, girls softball in particular are, have had great seasons. I think they're wrapping up their, their efforts for the season, but they're both planning fall activities. And the Rancho Athletics Association as a group is looking really hard at some higher level joint marketing. We've done joint marketing now for three, four years, but I think with a, with a nice marketing consultant on board and pursuing some strategies that we've seen Maria brought us from the private sector here at City Hall, we can do even better. So as always on Rancho Cordova, aiming a little higher, expecting a little more, and I have great hopes for the next, the next phase of Rancho Athletic Association activities. So with that, I think I'll end my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, David. All right, I'm gonna go straight to me because I don't believe I see Linda or Donald. So first, Happy Father's Day to all the fathers I could see. One, two, three, four. You guys are overwhelming and it's amazing that we had to, but thank you for everything you do for your families. Secondly, you know, when something like Juneteenth passes, as an African American, as the first African American council member and first black mayor of Rancho Cordova, these are the trailblazers that basically allowed someone like myself or my family to be successful. So, you know, we just got to take a moment and realize that these kind of steps are what was necessary for me to get to the point where I can be a council member and be an active member. So I'm just glad to see this and, and glad to see a citizen that put so much time and energy into bringing this to light. So thank you for everything you do. And, you know, we'll, we'll see what we can do about executing something along those lines for our city. Most importantly, I got to meet with my citizenry. I have office hours. I'd love to talk to you guys now that COVID is gone. I got to met with Faisal. She has a lot of ideas and it's always good to hear people on the ground and what they actually think. And I always like to educate them on what is going on in the city and what I can and can't do. And so thank you for taking the time and coming and meeting with me at City Hall. Congratulations to Log Off Brewing. If you guys didn't know, this is a bunch of IT nerds that basically got out of doing IT at the state and started a brewery and put it in Rancho Cordova. It's grown now and it's growing every day. Thank you for all my, Micah and Amanda and my city staff are stepping up and helping them to grow this new brewery in our area. Amazing. And if you guys don't know this, we, as a city, are teaming up with Folsom. And we're hoping that soon that we're going to have a two-by-two with Folsom to see where our cities align and where we can make great advancement as a group. Because we realize that the city doesn't just stop at the county line or at Folsom, that what helps us helps out the other cities up north of us. And so we're trying to find ways to partner together. They were really super excited to hear about the track thing. And we're seeing where our resources can benefit their resources and where their resources can benefit our resources in the future. And so we don't cannibalize each other, but we both grow in a good, safe fashion. So I'm excited about that, hoping to drag maybe David or maybe Siri into that conversation so we can have a two-by-two with surrounding cities and see what we can do to bring in bigger businesses in our region. Great job, our, of course, our baseball Little League. The final day was last week. My son was out there. It's cute to see someone, he learned four new pitches this year. Thank you, Mari Sloan. He was so excited that the pitcher could call plays and he knew how to throw them. So when he, the catcher called a four and that's his fake slow ball where the ball kind of loops in, they, he threw it and then everyone got really excited because the guy swung and they all started high-fiving and the ump had to tell him, hey, that's only strike two, so let's all go back to the game. But huge celebration. Thank you to, I mean, really, you know, Mr. Lamontia is an amazing individual and what he does for our Little League is amazing. So thank you for keeping that going. Thank you for everything you do for our city because without you, I wouldn't even know what to do. And then lastly, I met with the Sacramento Library Public Authority to see, to see where we're going to grow and, and me and Faisal have some amazing ideas about bringing our own Rancho Cordova Library into the region and identifying a location that's going to help out. And that's all I got from there. Cyrus, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say a couple of words about the cooling center. We do have a criteria when we face extensive periods of heat, temperatures over a hundred degrees, we do open the cooling center. So this was the case. And that's, that's the criteria that we have for opening the cooling center. So we're glad we were able to offer that and we had some members of our community that took advantage of the opportunity and used the cooling center. The other thing I wanted to point out is that we, everybody knows that we are in a serious drought. We have been in a serious drought and we have been working with the various water providers and purveyors in the city of Rancho Cordova. They all have slightly different plans related to conservation and, and making sure that we have, we follow through with their guidelines. That information will be forthcoming and to make sure there's no confusion with different areas and different customers that they have, we'll make sure that we connect all of our residents to those resources directly to the water companies and the water agency as they become available. One other thing I wanted to point out is that I was able to attend a Sacramento Valley Division League of California Cities Board Meeting. And great discussion, a lot of discussions related to COVID response, fire safety and drought and water conservation. So those are ongoing issues. Those are, those are on top of everybody's agenda, not only for our region, but also the entire state. So this, I'm sure that we will be following through with those discussions and if there are any specific steps or measures that we could take, we will be sure to share that with the, with the council. And lastly, thank you, Councilmember Sanders, for acknowledging the, the wonderful track meet and the great work that happened. This is, we take a great deal of pride in working with our community partners and making sure that we keep ultimately the, the best and the highest quality services for, for our community inside. And thank you for acknowledging for the staff's work on this. I would like to specifically acknowledge Stacy Delaney and Megan Siren for the great work they did on to make sure this, this happened. So, so thank you for acknowledging that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, so let's go ahead and we're going to move to consent calendar. Consent calendar is items that consist of matters being routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items may be approved in one motion. At this point, I'm going to go, oh, let me ask this. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar?
The, the city clerk's office did receive public comment for item number nine point four and nine point seven. Those are listed on the city's website and they have been distributed to the city council as well. And I don't see any hands in Zoom.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and pull nine point four from the, I'm gonna go ahead and pull nine point four from the consent calendar.
Mayor Gatewood, let me just acknowledge their names. Nine point four was Antonio Azavito and. Nine point four was Antonio Azavito and nine point seven was Donald Childs.
Excellent. I'm gonna go ahead and pull nine point four. And then I'm gonna look for a motion for the rest of the consent calendar.
What about nine point seven? Was it just a comment?
It was just a comment.
Okay.
I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
I second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge is absent. Vice Mayor Terry is absent. Mayor Gatewood.
Yes. All right, so let's go ahead and bring up item nine point four. For that, I'm gonna turn to Adam.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Councilmembers, members of the community. Just a, a minor change to the resolution for the recipient of this support is actually not Urban Housing Communities H4 LLC and Ayacahua, Juana. It is rather, the, the name of the entity is A O five seven five Rancho Cordova LP. And that change would be in both the title and in the fourth recital of that resolution. And with that, we have no other changes. And if you could move the staff recommendation with that, those two minor amendments, we would appreciate.
I'll move the staff recommendation with the two modifications that Adam just specified.
Excellent.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge is absent. Vice Mayor Terry is absent. Mayor Gatewood.
Yes. All right, we're gonna go on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item. For consideration, all items are approved in one motion. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and ask if there is any public comments.
The city clerk's office did not receive any written public comment via email for the consent public hearing items, and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
Excellent. I'm gonna close the public hearing item and then I'm gonna ask if my council wishes to pull any items. Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Siri, this is the most seconds you've ever done.
Yeah, I got a chance, right? You're not gonna take the next one.
I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Budge is absent. Vice Mayor Terry is absent. Mayor Gatewood.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, did we cover item nine point seven?
Yes. It was just that there was a public comment on it, but it wasn't needed to be pulled.
Okay, so that wasn't, that was not pulled.
Yeah.
I thought it was nine point four, right? Were you pulled?
Yeah, nine point four got pulled, but nine point seven did not get pulled. But there was a public comment about that in there.
Got it.
All right, so we're gonna move to public hearing items. And I'm gonna ask the city clerk to announce the subject.
The subject is the adoption of the 2021 through 2029 Housing Element Update and Addendum to the City's General Plan Final Environmental Impact Report.
Excellent. I'm gonna call on Stefan Heisler for staff report. Click the buttons. There he is.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff and members of the community. My name is Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the City of Rancho Cordova. Also here to present with me and, and provide answers to your questions is Cynthia Walsh from our consultant partner, Placeworks, who has been helping us put together this Housing Element Update. I have a rather brief presentation and then we're happy to take comments and, and questions. And I'm gonna try and take control of the screen here. There we go. Too far. Okay. So just an overview for the item this evening. I'll do a very brief review of what is included in the city's housing elements. And then we're gonna review the actions taken to date to develop the 2021 to 2029 Housing Element Updates to the city's general plan. And then the, really, the meat of the item this evening is to present the requested changes between this adoption draft and the public review draft that was approved by council in November 2020. And then also importantly, we'll be making the staff recommendation to adopt this Housing Element Update and the addendum to the city's final EIR. And then lastly, of course, also very important, provide opportunity for public comment and council questions and feedback. Very quick overview here. Housing Element is one of the eight mandated general plan elements. Our process, we began, well, the planning period that we're covering is 2021, starting, I believe, in September of this year through September 29. The due date for this is May 15. However, there is a 120-day buffer to adopt the Housing Element. We've been working on this since June of last year. And then just a brief overview of what is in the Housing Element. It contains an assessment of existing and projected housing needs during this planning period. Also, an analysis of land availability and resources and constraints. The evaluation of the effectiveness and appropriateness of the prior Housing Elements, just a review of, of actions that we were taking during the last Housing Element. And then lastly, the policies and programs to meet the housing needs of this planning period. So again, review of actions to date. June is when we, we kicked off the update process. Between August of last year and, and June of this year, we've been conducting community outreach, including three public workshops, multiple key stakeholder interviews, two city council hearings, as well as addressing numerous public comments and discussions with residents and regional housing agencies during this time. In November, the council approved a public review draft. In December, staff submitted that draft to HCD, the, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, for an initial 60-day review period. We received some comments back and therefore we submitted another draft in February 2021, responding to those comments from HCD. And they reviewed that for an additional 60-day period. We have, we got just a couple minor comments from that second period and we have addressed them in the draft that is before you this evening and with the recommendation for adoption. So some of the requested changes from the State Department of Housing and Community Development, there are a couple new actions, really to support actions that we have or, or goals and policies that we have in the, in the document already. But just to, you know, show some more support because actions have not exactly taken place yet around those actions. So one of those is supporting mixed-use zones and development in our mixed-use zone, because we haven't yet seen mixed-use development. And then as well, also, an action to support development on some of the large parcels in the new growth areas. Naturally, these, these parcels have not yet been broken up into the individual lots that will, that will have houses built on them in the future. So just because they are sort of large parcels, we just have to include an action to support the development of those into actual housing units. As well as fair housing inclusions across multiple actions to target assistance towards lower-income households, support opportunities in high-resourced areas, and improve areas of concentrated poverty. There's an especially, especially new and large focus around the AFFH or affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is the new state law requirement. HCD is still interpreting, you know, learning to interpret exactly what that means and what they need from jurisdictions in their housing elements. So we've been working with them through that process. And the draft tonight represents the, the requested edits that, that came from HCD around this area. And then, of course, stronger ongoing communication with housing stakeholders, so including stakeholders such as landlords, developers, mobile home park owners, tenants, to stay aware of the trends in the housing market, you know, such as where rent's going, where price is going. Also to share data and respond as appropriate. And really, the goal there is to lower impediments to housing development and, you know, try to help developers or affordable housing developers be able to build more easily. And then also another requirement from HCD was to provide more detailed timelines and quantified objectives. So there were a couple changes to, or rather, a few changes to the Regional Housing Need Allocation Arena Sites Inventory, which is the, the location of identifying sites that could be suitable for affordable housing. And I do want to mention first right off the bat, the comments that we received around Site C1. We did receive a comment about how we illustrate that site on our map. We had a, we illustrated that in one way in our, in our public review draft from November. And we made a small error in this draft, so we will be correcting that before we submit to HCD. Going back to the original illustration of that from the previous draft in November. To highlight the other site inventory changes, the three sites in the Stone Creek neighborhood, L1, L2, and L3 have been removed due to some constraints with the conditional use requirements and also potential expansion of the overflight zone at Meath Airport. Also, we've included several new sites at the request and recommendation of some of the public comments that we received. You can see them here. They're sort of the infill sites, generally small, along Folsom Boulevard. And then also, we've increased some of the density assumptions in the new growth areas where we have executed affordable housing plans that show a minimum density of 30 units per acre. So we've, we've increased our assumptions to meet that requirement. Also, we prepared an addendum to the city's final environmental impacts review. Because environmental review is required for this update, but as, because land uses in the general plan EIR are not changing as part of this update, this update of policies does not trigger any new significant impacts that haven't already been analyzed. Therefore, the addendum to the final EIR is, is possible. Our consultant, Placeworks, has prepared the addendum and confirms, as we suspected, that there are no new significant impacts that are not identified in the, in the general plan EIR, land uses and zoning, and therefore is in compliance with CEQA requirements. The staff recommendation for this item is to adopt the resolution, which will adopt the 2021 to 2029 Housing Element Updates and the addendum to the city's general plan final EIR as attached. And also, following adoption, staff will submit the document to HCD for a 90-day certification review. I'm not sure why they need 90 days after two 60-day reviews, but it is what it is. And if HCD has additional comments, the city will need to make additional revisions and re-adopt the document. We don't anticipate those additional comments based on our, our work with public comments and HCD already. But in the event, we would need to make those revisions and then re-adopt the document. That's all for my presentation and we're happy to take comments and questions.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and ask the clerks if there's any speaker cards.
The city clerk's office has received written public comment with regards to 11.1. And the first one came from Patrick Saluri. The second public comment came from Osha Mazur. And those are available on the city's website. There are also a few hands that are raised in Zoom. And so we'll go to the first hand that is raised, which is telephone number 916-804, which are the first few digits. And I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you and you will have three minutes to speak on this item.
Hello, can you guys hear me okay?
We hear you. Go ahead.
This is Faisal in Lincoln Village. Stefan, I'm very sorry. I hope this doesn't do anything to mess up your timeline. I just wanted to add some public feedback on the housing element, specifically regarding the identified infill plots, C2, C3, C4, C5. And my public comment for the housing element would be that, that land has sort of been advertised to the population as a civic center site. And so I do have concerns with dense housing on those parcels, particularly from what I've seen in C3. I would like to see larger civic uses and not only housing or not majority housing on the accumulation of those parcels right there. And that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Faisal.
The next public comment is Autumn. Autumn, I see that your hand is raised twice and that you've logged in a couple times. So I don't know if there's two of you or one of you, but...
There's two devices, but only one of me. So, but I think Carl is on the other device and maybe he didn't log in. So, but thank you. This is Autumn Epperhart from Cordova Meadows. And I'm requesting that the council rejects the current housing element plan and directs staff to remove the location of the civic center as an opportunity site. It's identified as C2, C3, C4, and C5. I'd like to also request that the council members consider all general comments that were submitted to the city in regards to housing at the civic center as you're deciding on how you're gonna cast your vote tonight. Because the council meeting agendas are not, are only posted 72 hours prior to a meeting, it's impossible for your constituents to identify specific agenda items if they submit public comments prior to the agenda being posted. Thank you.
And the next public comment is Helen. Helen, give me just a moment. Helen, you'll have three minutes and I've just unmuted you.
Do you have a comment? Did you raise your hand too? Two things is when you start talking about affordable housing, the average income is $50,000 in the city of Rancho Cordova. So these houses that you're putting in, no one in affordable housing or under the average income can afford any of these houses. So are we only gearing our affordable housing for the people bringing them in from the Bay Area? That's one question. The other thing is when we project to build housing on a floodway, that floodway has restrictions as far as the height of housing that can be built. No house can be visible on the American River. In the 70s, it was one restriction. In the 80s, every house on here, Sterling Park Drive had to have their houses evaluated to that current plan. Then when Lisa and her husband moved into their house, their house could be no taller than what it is, had to approve the color of the house and the roof based on the requirements on the American River Parkway plan. How are we going to put McNamshins down on the 24 of them, plus the other ones? And they're all gonna be seen by the floodway. Did anybody in Rancho Cordova consider that there's already rules in place that do not allow the building on flood plain to end the visibility from the American River Parkway? Thank you.
I have another speaker. That's Autumn. Autumn, that might be Carl.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, this is Carl Haas. I live in Cordova Meadows. And I also want to make a public comment on the C2, C3, C4, C5 location. I also believe that, that those sites should be removed from this housing plan for consideration for housing and that we should focus on putting more amenities there for the community that is accessible via the Light Rail Station and the numerous bike lanes that the, the city is putting in. So I... So I that's that's my public comment. I just requested those those be removed and considered as public spaces. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. I see one more hand. Bob Koshat. Bob Koshat, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, I just wanted to be on record as objecting to the housing in what you consider the civic center. I think putting it in this plan is kind of a shady way of bringing the housing in there. And and I object to it. Move the housing someplace else. You've got plenty of housing in that area already, and it sounds like the city is acting like the county did before we became a city, and they used that area as a dumping ground. So I'm somebody needs to get out and look at all the housing we already have in that area. Thank you. This is Bob Koshat, and I'm from Cordova Meadows.
Okay, Mayor Gatewood, that is all the public comment that we have for this item.
Excellent. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and Stefan, can you respond to the lady that said that she didn't get she didn't get enough time, please, on public comment? I think her name was Autumn.
Sure, I suppose, or maybe the city clerk could could back me up on that one. I believe we we followed standard process on the item. We we issued a public hearing notice in the Grapevine Independent two week or 10 days prior to this evening's council meeting. As far as I know, we met we met the required the typical requirements for a public hearing item like this.
And could I just note that to the extent that I believe this response is regarding an item related to the Cassus property, the council's previously given all of its relevant direction on this subject with Councilmember Sander not participating. And for purposes of any advice staff is offering now or that the council might give to staff on this particular item relating to Cassus, Councilmember Sander is not participating in this portion of the discussion.
All right, council, do you have any comments?
I do. Stefan, I've looked at the I don't know how many of these I've I've seen gone through now. A number of them, they're always a little mystical in in their setup, in part because there are so many rules, regulations, conditions, reports, hurdles, hoops that are involved that the state sort of puts us through to to put one of these together that we have to have someone like you sort of solely devoted to navigating all of that stuff. To have this report filed that doesn't guarantee that anything ever gets built anyway. It's kind of it always sounds like that's a strange thing to me that we have to set set land aside for the potential of building, but it doesn't require anything to be built. But nonetheless, it can cause a great consternation for for us and our residents when they see these these inventories. So I mean, for example, in the in tonight's presentation, I don't know exactly where I'm gonna come down on housing at the perhaps not well-named civic center. So I'd probably prefer that those were not in this list. But I'm also aware that two of my colleagues are not not present here tonight, both of them with a great deal of expertise in housing. So I'm wondering if we put this off, what is what does the timeline look like?
So if we if we were to put this off till, say, the July 19 meeting, we will still be able to submit to HCD within that 120-day buffer area or buffer time time limit before September 10. However, if we were to receive comments back from HCD, you know, at the very end of that 90-day period, I don't think we would be able to adopt re-adopt the new plan before September 10. That deadline is one again, one of those nebulous things that if we if we meet the deadline, we can be on an eight-year cycle. If we don't meet that deadline, it puts us in jeopardy to go into a four-year update cycle. That that would be the ramification. I would say regarding sites C2 through C5 over the civic center site, that has been identified in the housing element since 2013, the previous housing element update. So it's not it's not a new site that we are including. And again, like you said, just because it is identified, doesn't mean it's a requirement, doesn't mean something else can't go there.
I mean, we own it, so ultimate control is is with us. Whether it's in or out of this plan, housing could still be built there.
That's correct.
If we so determined it. I'm just saying, I'm not yet sort of sold on the idea that housing has to be there. So sometimes when we do this plan, we've got some wiggle room. How much wiggle room do we have in this one? Are we exceeding what the state requires, or are we right at it?
Right, so so our requirement is to zone sufficient land or identify sufficient sites to meet the the Rena allocation that we've been given, which is about 9,000 units. So we have identified sites sufficient to give us about a 330-unit surplus in the low and very low income category. That site we've identified for 117 units. So if we were to lose that site, or if we were to take it off of the inventory, we would still have a slightly smaller surplus. You know, we are expecting, right, because we don't know exactly what's gonna happen on that site, we could lose it anyways during the process. So if something else goes there, it would come off, you know, regardless. So that, yeah, that's the surplus situation.
So, okay, let's play that out a little bit. So let's say we submit this, we approve it, we submit this. State comments on it, and a month from now, we say, oh, we're not putting any housing there. Our plan as we go ahead, go ahead.
I guess it would be okay because we'd still have we'd still have about a 200-unit surplus. It's it's somewhat slim. Sometimes we've seen comments, you know, requesting a larger margin. We've seen previous state bills try to force cities to identify a larger margin of surplus. None of those have become state law yet.
So what happens in that four or eight-year cycle if you start putting uses into places that you said were for housing and you fall below the mandate?
Right, so that there there's a there's a very definite timeline where we'd have to identify new sites and submit that to HCD to show that we haven't or that we're still in compliance.
So we could technically pull this off and then put it back. Is that what you're saying?
You could also pull it off and still build housing there and get credit for it against the Rena allocation.
Is that right, Cynthia? You look like you want to say something really.
Yes, that is correct. And to just correct one thing, to stay on the eight-year timeline, you just need to adopt by September 10. You don't have to have a certified document by from HCD, and it doesn't have to have gone through any certain timeframe of review. You can actually adopt an out-of-compliance housing element to stay on the eight-year timeline, which is not our goal here. But I'm just saying that, you know, we can if for some reason you did want to wait, you know, and have your other council members input, there is still time to do that. That's not what Stefan wanted me to say, but.
Siri, what do you think?
So this is something that I asked even the last time one of these discussions came up on housing. I mean, this particular housing update, you know, has gone through three public workshops. You know, there you've had input from multiple key stakeholders, you've done tons of interviews, you've had two city council hearings on this, you have comments from residents and updates from numerous stakeholders. And now we're, you know, we're at a stage where there should be a consent calendar with approval. We've gotten updates from everybody, and we should have rolled it in, and we should be at a stage where we're like, yes. Looks like to me we're back to square one where we're getting feedback from residents. And then if this happens now, and then we take, which I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm saying we should. But then we should at one point have a hard stop where, you know, you have to make sure that we're taking into consideration what the residents need and have considered that update. And our next update should have incorporated everything, and we should move to the next step. So now we're back at the stage where we have a lot of community pushback on, you know, housing on civic center, which, you know, we we need to clarify. I don't think 70% of the civic center is housing, for one. You know, that's something that needs to be clarified. We need to be on the same page on that in order to move to next steps. So I'm with David. I don't think we're ready to move forward as is on the way it is set up because there seems to be a lot of confusion on what's happening, even on the Cassus property, right? Which 10 acres has been changed? What is that? We all those questions need to be answered before we can approve this particular proposal.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like we don't have a quorum on this one.
I think we might want Stefan to comment on that, or Cynthia, or Micah, or Cyrus, or somebody.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just a couple of things, want to separate a little bit the conversation around the civic center plan around housing and and how much housing is on that site and the adoption of the of the housing element in these locations. So I know they're both have a housing conversation or component about the about the items, but want to separate the two a little bit, and selecting kind of these sites as part of the housing element or as part of arena allocation does not ultimately make the selection that we're gonna have how much housing we're gonna have as part of the civic center site. So they're they're not they're related because they're all about housing on this site, but they're not necessarily going to restrict any choice that we may make as far as that you may make with the civic center, how much housing, how much community center space has to do with the amount of housing on this on this site. So just want to separate those two a little bit. Even if the council selects or keeps this as part of the allocation, if the project comes in, does not have any housing as part of the allocation, there's significant surplus or there's enough surplus to move that allocation as part of surplus, or we would have to find somewhere else if that surplus was used up along part of the process, and we lost that surplus as part of other projects that happened. So so I wanted to separate those two a little bit. They're two different conversations. This is really just focused on designating housing for arena allocation. And there has been significant work and and process in these conversations. These maps have not really changed. They changed a little bit, but they've this has been a part of the allocation since the since the original proposal for this site. And so obviously, if the council wants to continue this and have the conversation, we could do that. But just so you know, if if this is approved as going to HCD with this housing allocation, it doesn't mean that we're in a box or have to do housing as part of the civic center project. So just want to make that clear.
Correct. And just to add to that, the due date for the housing element was May 15. So currently, you are out of compliance. So it is important to adopt sooner rather than later. Just keeping that in mind.
Okay, that is a big deal. Micah, just to restate what you said, I think I said it earlier too, but these two things are sort of unconnected.
Correct.
If you if you want housing at the civic center, you don't it doesn't really matter whether it's in this plan or not. If you don't want housing at the civic center, it doesn't really matter whether it's in this plan or not. Because it could not be in the plan, and we could build it, or it could be in the plan, and we could not build it.
Yes, but the 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 future is still yours to determine on the civic future civic center site and project.
Welcome to the housing element world.
Yes.
Well, with that said, though, I understand. So I understand this is like on paper, we can approve and then still change things. But my statement on the civic center issue still stands. So we'll table it to when that conversation is, but that's a huge conversation to have because we've had many workshops on that. On this particular topic, you know, if, you know, we can change things going around, but we need to make that motion. My only other question was that there was a question on the Cassus property on where that 10 acres is, if you could answer that property. I I think I'm I have my questions answered for this one.
And and again, Councilmember Sanders is not participating in this, and it's and this is not an item on which the council's given any direction that it intends to make a change. You're just answering the question.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So so that as noted in the housing element site inventory table, we are and we have been assuming the 10 acres that front Folsom Boulevard on that site for the last eight years, and we're proposing the very same for the next eight-year cycle. There was just a unfortunate map error that we made that showed that highlighted the entire site, the C1 Cassus site, and so we will be making that edits on the map to highlight just the portion of the site that is assumed in the table.
Okay. Thank you for that.
All right.
So Stefan, one other question for you. If we were to if we were to delete that site that I can't mention, let's just say a site like that, and these, is that are we are we gonna be out of compliance with housing? Or are we gonna get below that minimum?
We're getting very close. Yeah, yeah, I believe we would be probably, unfortunately, a dozen units out of compliance.
All right, so just, you know, for the for the public to understand, this law requires that we have a certain number of acres zoned for dense housing. And that's what this is all about. How much how much is available for potentially someone to build dense housing on? It doesn't have anything to do with how much is actually built. Totally disconnected ideas. It does set up potential sites, but it doesn't mandate that anything there is built, and the city council can change at any future time the zoning on those, assuming we can come up with enough acreage to offset it. So we have to designate something else somewhere else as density to make up for a loss of density over here. I'm just trying to make that as as clear as I can.
Yeah, so so the way I see it is, you know, the one big issue with the civic center that, again, that's subject to change, even if we do approve it today, doesn't mean how much it is. And the other property I had my question answered. With that said, I am comfortable actually going ahead with the resolution.
And again, this is just for the the council, this is an action that would require an affirmative vote of a majority of all five of the council members. So you need three out of five, the three out of five who are here for this item right now to vote in favor of it. And and with again, with respect to the the Cassus property on which Councilmember Sanders had a conflict, the council has already given the direction to essentially have it treated as it is. But for the the court, the correction that is being made by staff, which simply conforms to your prior direction to leave it as it was before. So there's really no change. It's just a technical correction that staff has made at their own at their own behest, I understand. So there's no need for any further action here with respect to the the Cassus property or direction separate by the council with respect to the the Cassus property. And Mr. Sanders allowed, because that direction has already been given on Cassus by the council, to now come back and participate in the rest of these discussions and this vote on the whole the whole update and element as a whole.
David, what do you think about just pulling C2, 3, 4, and 5?
That could be done. You could pull any site off the list. It sounds sounds like, well, there might be one on there that's so large that we couldn't.
Right.
But you can pull anything off the list.
Because it doesn't really need to be there, and citizens are upset.
It just if it potentially makes more work for ourselves in the future. If we were to build something else on that, you would you would have to find other other acreage to make up for. You have to stay above that that minimum.
But that.
You get credit for whatever you build. That takes the number down, but otherwise, you gotta gotta have enough zoned for that number.
Essentially, it it has the effect of making the search for replacement properties potentially more difficult.
Yep. So what do you think, David?
It's it's a tough call. I mean, flexibility in dealing with these state mandates is a good thing. Keeping faith with our community on something like this that's probably not well-understood is is also a challenge. is is also a challenge, so it's sort of a, a balance between these two things. We have more flexibility if it's listed there, uh our community's happier if it's not, by appearances. So but it doesn't mean it it's not connected directly, as we've said multiple times.
Right.
So if someone, if someone were going to suggest removing those parcels, I would, I'd go along with that.
But if we remove it, we probably should pull it and push it to let Donald and Linda have a vote in this, huh?
Personally, I'd like to hear what they have to say about it anyway, um in general. But they have, you know, this is a long process. I also heard our staff say that, you know, this thing was due in May and we're here in June.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know, Stefan, can we, can we even make an alteration now without getting further behind schedule?
I believe we can make an alteration. Well, if you want to change, if you want to pull a site off the map, uh you could do that now, and we we could submit that.
All we have to do is accept the the plan by September, correct?
Adopt it by September ten, yeah.
Yes.
What's the May date then?
The May, sorry, Seven, the May date was the housing element due date, and then SB375 came around and it gave you a hundred and twenty day buffer. So you have a hundred and twenty days after that May fifteenth date.
Oh, okay.
To beyond an eight-year update cycle. So if you missed that hundred and twenty buffer, then you have to update every four years for two cycles.
That's right. Now I get it.
Which is more time-consuming and expensive.
Right. Means you have to go through this process twice as often.
Right.
Yes, you'd see us again in four years.
Um so if I, if I may make a suggestion, if uh if the council is considering uh modifying any of the prior directions, uh my recommendation would be to move this item to the next meeting and to make sure that we have a full council uh discussion about this topic and and make sure that we weigh in the other considerations related to this uh action.
The coo- the two key things that I'm seeing here, Cyrus, are the Civic Center and the other property, and um these are big discussion points. But again, what I am hearing is, even if we do make that decision today, that we can still, it just means that, you know, uh we can still change things on both of these uh properties. So I'm not understanding why we want to push it out if, even if we do approve today, we're still open to change moving forward.
Yeah, and and that's an accurate statement. I think the uh ultimately, what the council decides uh uh at the Civic Center site or on the other property and the other development, is they're ultimately separate, independent discussions. And uh and either one of those uh would require a fully vetted process through a per, through public, uh a public process, and not only the public input, but also the council input would be uh in required and important to make the final decision. So so this, the, as I think has been mentioned by staff, these are two separate and independent actions and decisions.
Right. And time is money. This is, this has come up in council, public meetings, workshops, so many times. So unless we see, I see a strong need that, you know, once we make this decision, things can change, or things are going to blow up, I I don't see a reason why we want to push this agenda to a future topic.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point, and then I'm going to ask, do we have a council like to push this motion?
Siri, I think I just heard you ready to do it.
I I said I'm not ready to do it.
Oh, you're not ready to do it?
I'm not ready to do it. I'm like, we already discussed this so many times, so I'm like, let's move forward with this, because there's two separate topics. That's, I'm not ready to move for, um.
Are you not, are you ready not to do this, or do you want to bring the rest of the council back to talk about it? Is that what you're saying, Siri?
I'm saying we move ahead today.
Ah, okay, that's what I thought. Floor is open for a motion in that case, I guess.
Siri, this is where you.
Okay, I approve, I approve this motion.
You would uh.
Move the staff recommendation, I believe, is for motion?
Yes, move the staff recommendation. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, let's go ahead and take a roll call.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Budge is absent. Vice Mayor Terry is absent. Mayor Gatewood.
Yep. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. So let's move on to eleven point two, and can I have Stacy read the subject?
Rio de Loro Parcel sixty-six, project number DD nine-nine-zero-one, tentative subdivision map.
Go ahead, Nick. Are you here? Can you get that staff report?
And I'm going to move Nick over. I just moved Nick over. And there's a number of other people as well.
Okay, so uh good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Uh my name is Nick Sosa, Associate Planner for the Planning Department. Uh tonight, the project that I'm going to be presenting is the Rio de Loro Parcel sixty-six, tentative subdivision map. It's DD nine-nine-zero-one. Next slide, please. So Parcel sixty-six is within the Rio de Loro specific plan. This map is showing the boundary of the specific plan within the city. Uh the area is south of White Rock Road, east of Sunrise Boulevard, north of Douglas Road, and west of Ground Line. Uh next slide, please. So within the Rio de Loro specific plan, Parcel sixty-six is located along the north boundary, just along White Rock Road. It is adjacent to Parcel sixty-seven, which was already uh previously approved and has already began grading for construction. Um next slide, please. So the applicant is requesting a tentative subdivision map for the portion of the, this portion of the overall Rio de Loro specific plan. Uh the requested map would divide the project area into a hundred and thirty-two medium-density single-family lots, as well as additional landscape areas and green belts along the South Poverty Lane. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Butler, so she can um give a better description of the the map.
Thank you, Nick. Can everyone hear me? Excellent. Thanks, Nick. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and uh councilmembers. As Nick mentioned, I'm Sarah Butler with Wood Rogers, and I am the project planner on this project, um and uh representing the applicant Elliot Holmes. Um and I'll briefly share a few details about the proposed project. Um as Nick stated, we are proposing to subdivide Rio de Loro Parcel sixty-six. If we could go ahead and move to the next slide, that would be great. Thank you. Um so we are proposing dividing Rio de Loro Parcel sixty-six into a hundred and thirty-two single-family, medium-density, forty-five-by-eighty-foot lots. This project also includes a four-acre landscaped green belt to the seps that serves as both a drainage channel, as well as a pedestrian corridor with a ten-foot trail. The green belt continues through the green belt corridor of the approved Rio de Loro Parcel sixty-seven, which is directly west of RDO sixty-six, as Nick mentioned. This green belt corridor will be an amenity for future residents, and in order to maximize pedestrian access to not only the green belt, but also the rest of the Rio de Loro project area, uh our project team worked closely with city staff to provide two uh forty-foot landscaped pedestrian access paseos. Um Lot E, which you can see in the southeast corner of the residential portion of RDO sixty-six, sort of in the center of the slide right there, um Lot E is positioned to provide a convenient pedestrian connection to the green belt for both residents of sixty-six before you today, and Parcel sixty-five, which is directly to the east of Parcel sixty-six, not proposed today, but thinking in forward planning, we wanted to provide the paseo in a convenient location. Uh Lot D is another paseo, which is located towards the north northwest corner of the Parcel sixty-six boundary. Uh this is another forty-foot landscaped, landscaped paseo that is positioned directly across Rancho Cordova Parkway from a paseo in the approved RDO sixty-seven subdivision. Uh this was strategically placed in an effort to provide pedestrian connectivity between RDO sixty-six and RDO sixty-seven. Uh finally, we're, we are proposing uh landscaped corridors along Rancho Cordova Parkway and White Rock Road. Um these will also include enhanced entries off of the aforementioned uh roadways. Uh these entries are shown on the map as Street One off of White Rock Road and Lot Fortune Street off of Rancho Cordova Parkway. These entries will have neighborhood entry signage and landscaping to assist in defining the neighborhood and also contributing to its identity and sense of place. Uh next slide, please. Uh to wrap up some of the details of the project, here is a land use summary table of the proposed subdivision. Uh again, we are proposing a hundred and thirty-two single-family, medium-density, forty-five-by-eighty-foot lots totaling thirteen-point-seven acres. There are five landscaped corridor lots, Lots A through E totaling one-point-six acres, and one four-acre green belt along with our major and minor roadways. Uh thank you for the opportunity to present our project, and thank you for, uh thank you to city staff for all their hard work on Rio de Loro sixty-six as well. Uh with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to you, Nick.
Thanks, Sarah. Um next slide, please. So just to sum it up, um the city council adopted the Resolution ninety-two dash two-zero-one-zero for the Rio de Loro specific plan, EIR and EIS. Uh this project was analyzed as part of that Rio de Loro specific plan, EIR and EIS, and therefore is exempt pursuant to CECLA Guideline, Section one-five-one-eight-three. Um next slide, next slide, please. So staff is recommending that the project uh be determined exempt per Section one-five-one-eight-three, projects consistent with the community plan, general planner zoning of the CECLA Guideline, and adopt the resolution for the Rio de Loro Parcel sixty-six tentative subdivision map with the attached conditions of approval. Next slide, please. And for questions, staff is here, as well as the applicant, and um we'd be happy to answer any of those questions for you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm going to ask the city clerk, is there any speaker cards?
The city clerk's office did not receive any emails related to this for public comment, and I do not see any hands that are raised. No.
Okay, I'm going to see, is uh public, uh council, do you have any comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Um so Nick, was this the the density that we originally expected for this uh for this parcel?
Yes. Uh this was all part of the Rio de Loro specific plan, yes.
Okay, so it's significantly more dense than the parcel to its uh, to its west.
Yes, mm-hmm.
Um the the difficulty I have with the exhibits, and it's just isn't about this one, Nick, but a, but a lot of them uh from planning, is we we kind of lack context, you know, when these are sent to us. Uh we get a lot of maps of what they're calling here, RDO sixty-six. Um but frankly, uh you know, if RDO sixty-five or sixty-seven's referred to, I don't think that's on any map in front of me. I don't know how it engages with that. I don't have any context here to say what the trails are in the region, or where pedestrians may be wanting to walk. I'm just lacking that, that context. So uh I mean, I was able to refer to other things that I have, other than the exhibits that were presented in, in, in uh this item in front of us. But in the future, I do think, I said this before, I do think that context is really important. And otherwise, we just have to assume that you guys are, you guys are watching it and and got it without us having an an eye to it. Um we had a planning item here just about a month ago with a, a regional town center across the street, and I'm not, I'm not sure that staff was actually uh watching that from the perspective of how do people walk to and from that regional town center, literally across the street from the project, and that regional town center hardly appeared on anything in front of us. So it's not, this is not, you just happen to be here tonight, Nick, it's not about you, but.
Yeah.
We've, we've got to change how we look at this and take a little step back so that we see a better uh context. So for example, that we've got this drainage lane, this greenway, um I don't think anything's in front of us that tells us what's on the other side of that.
Um on the other side, on to the south of that?
South of the southeast side of this sort of prominent greenway in this RDO sixty-six.
Uh Stephanie, can you go back a slide to the, to that one? Yeah. I believe it's going to be, um it'll be an industrial use area on that side of the green green belt. And we can definitely include more of a context so that we can open up that scope, so you can really see the bigger picture. Um I appreciate that feedback, and I totally understand why you would want to see a larger area, and we can do that, we can incorporate that into our future presentations.
Like, what are the, what are the bike trails, sort of how does it fit into that map? Is any alter, you know, is there any alteration to what we expect in terms of the bicycle or trail connectivity? Uh things like that, because we're going to have a series of these coming along, I expect, and I just think we ought to be as as wise as we possibly can and as adaptable as we can going forward. But I do want to um praise the applicant here for, for a plan that looks like it's got great, as you would expect from Elliot, great uh pedestrian connectivity. So there are no pockets or, or uh dead ends that that people get stuck in. One of the analogies I heard, gosh, probably twenty years ago, was what happens when you throw the ball over the back fence and it lands in the neighbor's yard? How do you get there from where you are? And you can look at subdivisions in the region, and there's practically no way to get there from where you are. But virtually every Elliot plan will allow you to uh to get there, not, perhaps not directly, but reasonably directly. Because even if it takes a long way to drive there, you can walk there in a shorter distance. So I I just appreciate that uh that connectivity and that sort of more modern way of looking at a neighborhood. But those are, those are my only comments, they were more obviously internal than external.
Thank you.
Siri, do you have anything?
No, nothing to add.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move approval?
I second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Sander. Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Budge is absent. Vice Mayor Terry is absent. Mayor Gatewood.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, Price. All right. Okay, we're going to go to regular calendar items, and I'm going to ask the clerk to announce the subject.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of the City of Rancho Cordova Community Facilities District number two-zero-one-four-dash-one Montalena, approving and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement, the execution of a fiscal agent agreement, approving the form of the preliminary official statement, approving sale of such bonds pursuant to a bond purchase agreement, and approving related documents and actions.
All right, can I have Michelle for a staff report, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Michelle Mingay, Senior Finance Analyst. Um the item before you tonight is the consideration for the final step, and basically, it's just a formality, to be able to issue the first series of bonds for the Community Facilities District twenty-fourteen-dash-one, the Montalena Project. The CFD was formed in twenty-fourteen for the purposes of funding facilities and services in the Montalena Project. Proceeds from the issuance of this bond will be used for the construction and/or acquisition of improvements, um which are either required or benefit the Montalena Project. Uh these improvements may include, but are not limited to, um park construction, roadway improvements, and/or the payment of infrastructure-related impact fees. Um it's important to note that the special taxes that are issued, um or the special taxes that are collected for these bonds are limited for these bonds are limited to the Community Facilities District, um, and they are secured solely by the taxes collected within that district and are not a debt of the city's general fund. And with that, I will open it up to any council questions for either myself or members of our bond finance team.
All right, guys, do you have any questions? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask for a motion. Oh, first I'm gonna ask for public comment, Stacy, is there any public comment?
Um, there is no public comment via Zoom, and the city clerk's office has not received any public comment via email.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna ask for a motion.
Uh, thank you, Michelle, good report. Um, I'll move approval.
I second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
Councilmember Budge is absent, Vice Mayor Terry is absent, Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna let you clear everybody out and get Albert and Christine, Christina, ready. Right. All right, Stacy, please announce the subject and next item.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to award contract number two zero two-one dash eight-one with Duberry Engineers, Inc. in an amount not to exceed three million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents for civil engineering, design, and environmental services for the Sunrise Boulevard Improvement Project from Kiefer Boulevard to Jackson Highway to widen the road and intersection, increase safety, and promote livability.
All right. Albert and Christina, can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor Gatewood and council members, Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And improving Sunrise Boulevard between Kiefer and Jackson Highway will increase beauty on the corridor, safety, regional connectedness, and also encourage and promote development in nearby developments. And we're just in proposing to embark on this first phase, first step, which would be to enter in to a design contract, and Christine Cordy will give us more information.
Thanks, Albert. Um, next slide, Persephone? Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the community. My name's Christine Cordy. I'll be the project manager of this important project for the community. The goals tonight are to inform the city council on this, um, proposed contract and project and receive community input, and ultimately recommend approval of this design contract. So with that, next slide, please. So here's a little overview of the proposed Sunrise Improvement Project, um, from Kiefer Boulevard to Jackson Highway. It's a one-point-three-mile stretch, and it also includes intersection improvements at Jackson Highway and Sunrise Boulevard. At the intersection, we have Folsom South Canal and Laguna Creek, which will have some bridge structures that also will need to be redesigned as part of the project. So the overall project includes pavement rehabilitation, roadway widening from two to four lanes, which will increase capacity, utility locations, median landscaping, bike lanes. As I mentioned, there are bridge structures in the area, and we will connect to, um, our existing intelligent transportation systems and update drainage facilities. The total project cost is thirty-six million dollars, and it is a shared jurisdiction between the city and the county. This project improves safety, creates regional connections, alleviates, um, congestion, supports the city's development on the southern portion of the community, promotes livability, and contributes to economic development. So, um, the proposed design fee is three-point-four-nine million, and that is, uh, being proposed to be split between Sacramento County at two-point-four million and city impact fees, about one million. So, uh, next slide, Persephone? So this picture on the left shows the existing two travel lanes of Sunrise in this area. It is a rural, um, rural undivided road and in poor condition, and the proposed alignment will be four travel lanes with a median and bike lanes. So last slide. So in conclusion, tonight, we are looking, we are recommending approval of a resolution for the city manager to execute contract twenty-twenty-one dash eighty-one with Duberry Engineers for the civil engineering, design, and environmental in an amount not to exceed three-point-four-nine million. And once, um, if that is approved, the next steps in the process are to initiate our environmental right-of-way services and civil engineering design, and then we will work with Sacramento County to finalize a reimbursement agreement for that two-point-four million dollars in, um, design fees. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions of the council.
Do we have any, um, comments from the public?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment in writing via email. And, uh, I do not see that any hands are raised.
Uh. Council, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, just a brief one. Christine, you mentioned bike lanes, those are on-road bike lanes, those are like big shoulder bike lanes on the road as opposed to a class-one separated bike lane, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there anything within our bike master plan that, that we should or could have considered upgrading along this particular segment?
Um, Albert, would you like to answer that?
Sure, sure, I'd be happy to. The, we, this project will include bicycle lanes. This is, of course, an interim improvement. As development continues in the Sun Creek specific plan, and of course in the, the future, all the way to the south end of the city, that will include many different elements associated with the ba, the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, including core, um, core corridors on Rancho Cordova Parkway and along other arterials, as well as off-site on, uh, highlighting some of Rancho Cordova's beautiful environments um, adjacent to the wetlands and preserves within the city.
Yeah, I just want to be sure we don't miss an, miss an opportunity to, to look at that, um, and be sure we're choosing the best option for those connections, you know, in the case where future development includes a wetland set aside, for example, we may not be able to provide that parallel capacity to Sunrise immediately adjacent to Sunrise. So only opportunity would sort of be this plan, the engineering of this segment, if that were the, if that were going to be the case. And of course, it's county jurisdiction on the other side of Sunrise, and we don't have any idea really what, what their plan is there. I, although, actually, I do think they've done some planning, but it's not, uh, not obviously committed to yet.
North-south access adjacent, running parallel to Sunrise, of course, we have the Folsom South Canal, um, which is a, a great resource and quite heavily used. Um, we don't currently have anything on Sunrise Boulevard itself in the plan, and if that's something that the council wanted us to, to look at, it's cer, certainly something we could look more closely at. We do have parallel capacity, as I mentioned, on the west in the Folsom South Canal, as where, as well as parallels north-south capacity to the east of it, that'll come along in the future with later development. Um, but if council wanted us to look at something specifically on Sunrise Boulevard, we could certainly include that as a part of, as something we look at, you know, as a part of our design.
Assuming we have access to the Folsom South Canal, I don't know where the keeper might be the only point where that access would occur between there and Jackson, I'm assuming, Folsom South Canal. And on the west side, you know, or the east side, rather, we might have something good, I'm just not, uh, I don't have that plan in front of me, so I'm not sure.
I did want to reiterate that there are, um, this is a significant development, um, and we're looking forward to partnering with the county on this project. Um, and of course, this will be a great use of the city's impact fee program, um, that will pay the city's fair share for this proposed improvement.
All right, Siri, any questions?
I'm good.
All right, so I'm gonna ask for a motion.
I propose we approve this motion.
So moved. David?
Go ahead.
All right, roll call.
I would like to acknowledge that Councilmember Budge, um, just recently joined. I, I don't know how much of this presentation she has, um, been able to hear, but I'm gonna call on all the council members who are present. Um, the motion was by, uh, Councilmember Pulapati, um, so roll call. Councilmember Pulapati?
And for the record of. And I, I would simply add, for the record, if, uh, Councilmember Budge is not able to participate in the entire discussion, that he should abstain from participation.
Okay. Go ahead, Stacy. Did you say yes or no? Mayor?
Oh, oh, did you do a call, sorry, uh, yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
I'm going to unmute Councilmember Budge.
Abst, abst, abstain?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Terry is absent, Mayor Gatewood?
Hi.
All right. Go ahead, let's go ahead and do the last of it, and let's get.
Uh. Mayor, I think I'm on point for this one.
Uh, excellent, okay, so I'm away from him to clear everybody out. Real quick, mute the babies in the background. All right, Stacy, let's go ahead and talk about this emergency ordinance. Go ahead and read the.
Item twelve-point-three, an urgency ordinance amending Rancho Cordova Municipal Code relating to fireworks.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the community, and staff. The council asked us to come back, uh, to you with a draft ordinance or, and draft urgency ordinance relating to social host liability for illegal fireworks. Uh, again, the background for this, that's critical for the community to understand in places and context, and your desire to enforce this type of measure and context, is that Metro Fire experienced a sixty-one percent increase in fire incidents from illegal fireworks um, just between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty during the couple, uh, the few-day Fourth of July weekend. Uh, the state has also just recently declared, uh, that a majority of the state, including Rancho Cordova, is in extreme drought conditions that greatly increase wildfire activity and diminish water access. And illegal fireworks place not only a significant strain on the entire nine-one-one system and those in need of other types of responses and services, they also, of course, threaten and, and create property damage, um, and personal, the risk of personal injury to those directly impacted by them. Um, here we are just talking about the, uh, use of illegal fireworks. The city permits safe and sane fireworks, and, uh, they are an important part of the community life, and this ordinance only addresses illegal fireworks. Um, the approach that the ordinance takes is to focus on giving an additional tool to enforce against illegal fireworks by focusing the liability on social hosts and broadening the, the ability of, uh, of Rancho Cordova enforce, the enforcement team to, uh, potentially actually, uh, uh, file, levy fines on the, uh, individuals who allow illegal fireworks to be discharged from their homes. Um, the social horse, uh, social host ordinance will dramatically simplify the ability of our enforcement teams to, um, actually find and cite the individuals who, um, who are engaged in, uh, the discharge of fireworks because, and these types of fireworks, because instead of actually seeing the person launching them, they are able to go to and identify the place from which they were launched and, and, uh, cite the person who is in control of that, that home or property. Um, it's important for you as someone who may be hosting an event where someone, uh, unexpectedly launches an illegal firework from your home or property, that if you contact the city immediately and ask for assistance removing that person or reporting that there's been an illegal firework, illegal fireworks discharged from your property, that you will not face any liability under this draft ordinance. Um, the council also is, is justified in, in making this, taking this action in part because, um, uh, it has, in addition to in exacerbating the drought conditions that previously existed a few weeks ago, um, there has not been any measurable rain since May in Rancho Cordova, and the heat wave last week broke some temperature records that had stood for over forty-five years in the Sacramento area in Rancho Cordova. And so the risk of, of significant damage resulting from illegal fireworks has only significantly increased, justifying the potential for the council to take action on this as an urgency ordinance. The adoption of this urgency ordinance tonight will require a four-fifth vote of the council. If you implement this, the city count, the city staff is prepared to work closely, um, with a fireworks task force of ten individuals from both the code enforcement department and PD and SAC Metro Fire, who would work together in a coordinated fashion to, um, target those who directly launch illegal fireworks and those who are social hosts for illegal fireworks, and would expect to, um, to cite them for significant fines if this ordinance is adopted. Uh, we would expect, if you adopt this ordinance, to be back to you a few months after the Fourth of July with an update on how the ordinance performed, how the overall effort at managing these sorts of emergency risks, uh, went over the Fourth of July, and otherwise talking to you about whether or not there were any changes or updates that we would want to, uh, to make to the ordinance after using it for the first time. And with that, I have no further comments, but would ask that you consider adopting this ordinance as an urgency measure so that it can go into effect immediately to address this immediate threat to public health, safety, and welfare.
Excellent, thank you, Adam. Um, so I'm gonna ask for public comment. Um, Helen, guys, this is the, the, um, uh, measure we're going to take to try to hopefully stop as, as much illegal fireworks going on, because really, it's a danger. And so I'm gonna look for public comment from Stacy, looks like someone just raised their hand. Oh, two people raised their hand, excellent, let's go ahead and hear from them.
So one of those is Councilmember Budge, um, so I'm going to, um.
No, that was, I'm sorry, that was an attempt to unmute and be ready for the motion.
Okay, very good. All right, well, we're glad that you're with us. Um, for public comment, um, Autumn, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thanks, this is Carl. Um, I just want to say thank you for, uh, drafting something to try and address the illegal fireworks. I can't tell you how many times I've been woken up in the middle of night, one-thirty with a loud bang, and I know this is more around, you know, fire safety, which is also very important, but just, you know, not being able to get a good night, re, good night's rest is just really something that, um, I think a lot of people in the community, um, have trouble with around this issue, and so I, um, just want to say I appreciate you trying to do something about it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Carl, and it's also for the individuals that came up to me and talked to me about their, uh, their PSD. We're trying to see what we can do to help you guys out. Go ahead, Stacy.
The next speaker is, uh, area code nine-one-six-eight-zero-four.
Fiza, is that you?
Hi, yeah, this is FISA in Lincoln Village. I didn't think I had a stance on fireworks. My police think they're cool. It doesn't bother me too much. But then I get to see my papa's dogs be terrified night after night. And then I look at Nextdoor and I see that the neighborhood across the way had a fire the other night from two homes doing the illegal type fireworks and catching those two essentially on fires. When I can see the immediate threat to the community, I have a problem with it. So I do support this resolution. Hopefully, enforcement will be able to spread out a little bit if this includes code being able to enforce. It's better than Chief Adams' suggestion that we conduct citizens arrest because you have to catch it in the act. I would like to see resources in terms of bodies on the ground allocated to enforcement. Otherwise, there's no end to it. So thank you for this resolution. It is a starting point. Thanks.
Thank you, FISA.
The city clerk's office does not have any additional public comment for this item.
All right. So I'm just 100% for it. We need to get something on the books. It's very hard to find this, but I count on my citizens to do what right now. It's fire season. It's real dangerous, guys. And this is just a way to show that we're with the other bodies of government around us in other jurisdictions are doing the same thing. And we just need to all be together during this fire season and not have, California have a new thing called smoke season. So this is a critical one. So we guys need to all put together. Siri, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'll accept that, yes, we need to move forward with this. PTSD is very real.
Yeah, I agree. Linda?
So, am I still unmuted?
No, you're good. We can hear you.
Okay. So, no, I would simply move that we waive the reading and adopt the urgency ordinance.
I second.
I have a question actually for Adam.
Yes, sir.
Adam, I think you said there was a 69% increase in fires between 2019 and 2020. Is that, is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, the data, the data we got from SAC Metro Fire was that there was 61% increase in fire incidents related to, caused by illegal fireworks from 2019 to 2020 during the July 4th extended weekend.
So is that for Rancho Cordova or for them district-wide?
I believe that's district-wide.
District-wide. And do you know what the gross number is for district-wide?
I do not have the gross numbers.
Just a 67% increase. Okay. Yeah, that's, I asked for some stats. That one doesn't tell me much. It could have gone from three to six, you know, or something. We'd have 100% increase. Could have gone from three to five and we'd be about this range. So I'm not quite sure.
So we actually have a two-by-two, we have a two-by-two coming up with Metro Fire. And I can certainly ask them for that kind of information.
It's just interesting because people are always talking about, you know, the risk of fires. And we just had one the other night. I know it exists. I just feel like it would be really good if we could tell people, you know, well, last year in Rancho Cordova, there were four. Or last year there, in Rancho Cordova, there were 40. You know, that's a really big, really big difference.
Sure.
How many were structure fires?
We'll find out.
Were grass fires. Because otherwise, these things grow really big, you know, in people's minds. And I want to spare them that, if we can, through good information. So...
Councilmember Sander, I actually do have hard numbers on that, which was, it was 18 district-wide and went up to 29 district-wide the following year. So we can, we can drill down a little more on the Rancho Cordova numbers, but that's metro district.
All right. So we are probably...
We'll find out.
We're probably a quarter of them or a third of them. Something in there.
I don't know. Metro Fire District is incredibly large. But we'll find, we'll find out, David. We'll find out. And of course, you know, you, as you unwittingly pointed out, a lot of it has to do with your personal experience. You were aware of a fire that happened, which was obviously close to you. And so, what, three or four years ago, when I happened to be on scene for the fire that broke out in kind of the Mona Lena region, you know, I mean, that was in North and it, you cannot believe the speed at which it spread. And, and for the people whose back fences were singed, that was very real. So, you know, it really does depend on your experience. Or for the gentleman who called in, simply because you know how many reports we get on.
Oops. I may have lost you, Linda.
She's still connected.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are. You're back.
No, you guys, you guys have cut in now a little bit also. Many, many times on Nextdoor, people report on every night fireworks at all times of the year. So this is an important stat.
Excellent. All right. I'm going to ask for a motion.
I did.
Oh, you did?
As serious as I did it. Right.
Excellent. So I'm going to do a roll call.
Councilmember Budge? Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Terry is absent. Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
I have a question for Cyrus about how we enforce this or what the, what the plan may be. So as I understand it, last year, we had a partnership with SAC Metro Fire. Linda, you might know about this too, or Micah. And we had some joint units go out, police and fire, looking for illegal fireworks, particularly around the Fourth, because that's when they were most intensively used, the illegal fireworks. And they had some success, is what we were told. But what we're experiencing is fireworks year-round. You know, in my neighborhood, it's every, not my immediate neighborhood, but I can hear fireworks every single night where I live. They occur between 5:00 PM and 2:00 AM. Sometimes it's one incident. Sometimes maybe it's two or three. Typically, you can't see them up in the air. If you're inside, you'd have to rush out and try to look anyway. It's pretty hard to do. Typically, it's very limited. It's not like someone's setting off 10. They're setting off one or two here and there. And so I remember us talking to our police chief at some point about this and getting the report back of those kind are hard to find. But on the Fourth of July, when they're setting off 100 things, all from one spot, those are easier to find. So I'm hoping that our strategy going forward with this ordinance, that now makes it easier to penalize those who we can find evidence on, allows us not only to work over the Fourth of July on this, but also year-round, to try to take a bite out of that new norm that seems to have cropped up in our community and some of the others with fireworks year-round. Do we have any comments on that or strategy on that?
Sure, I can address that. And Micah, please feel free to chime in as well. We have been having some conversations with both our police department and code enforcement. We think this would be a joint effort between the city with our code enforcement, our police department, and SAC Metro Fire. And we will also rely on our residents to let us know. It's, as you can imagine, you know, most of the time, we do receive a report of some illegal fireworks. But when our police dispatch or when our code enforcement officers arrive, there's no one to be found. So the more information we can get, the more accurate and exact information we can get as to the location, to potential, you know, personnel, people who are dispatching the fireworks, that would be helpful to our enforcement officers, both on the police side and code enforcement side. So that's essentially what we hope to do. We will also have mobilized our, both our code enforcement officers and police officers on the night of the Third and the Fourth to do active patrolling on some of the hot zones or some areas that have historically, they had more illegal fireworks, and they would be patrolling those areas pretty much through the whole night. I mean, I think, we think most of it dies down after about 1:00 AM or so. But police would be actively patrolling those areas on the night of the, and both the Third and Fourth of July this year.
Yeah, I'll just add, Cyrus, of the, you know, there is an operational plan in place of a joint effort between code enforcement and PD and Metro Fire to be out in additional numbers on the Third and Fourth. I'll also mention, there was some effort and there is some effort continuing on to focus on trying to get to the illegal fireworks before the Third and Fourth happen. And so there's some efforts and some different stings and efforts between our pop officers and Metro Fire, trying to get some of these, some of these illegal fireworks off the street before we even get to the, to the place of the Third and Fourth. And so when the time comes, we'll also come back with some information about how the Third and Fourth went and some details about kind of some of the operational update report as well.
So for that rest of the year time period, it's really hard to find them, I think. I mean, that's what I've heard previously here. I know some other jurisdictions, like San Jose, they may have an app specifically for this. I'm not sure. I know I saw that in some jurisdiction, but I'm wondering if maybe there's a push we could do, because we're going to have to rely on neighbors to say, yeah, I heard that, or yeah, I heard that and it was that direction, to try to sort out where they're coming from. I've heard previously, there's hundreds of sites, you know, that this is probably happening at around the city on an annual or around year basis. So trying to pick some of those off, I think is going to require some citizen involvement as well as some staff involvement. So we might want to think carefully about how we can best collect all that community input about where those fireworks are being heard or maybe where they're being set off.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent. All right. Council, do you guys have any future agenda items?
So, Garrett, hang on.
All right.
I'm not sure we voted on that, but number one, no, we did vote. So I have, I have a question. Based on David's comments, I'm wondering if our CPD has one of those shot directional capabilities? Because this is the kind of thing that could be picked up on a gadget like that.
Shot Spotter.
Yeah, Shot Spotter. Well, that's, yeah. So that would be something that Micah could research.
I think we've looked at that before for this purpose. And as I recall, Cyrus, I don't know if you were involved in those conversations back then, but it was about $1 million for a small neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah. We, yeah, we've, we've actually looked into this. It's a, it's not as easy as it sounds. I think this is a very sophisticated application that has to be set up and it's very limited in its application. So we will look into it. Maybe the technology has changed, but the last time that we looked at that was back in 2015 or 16. So five years, a lot may have happened with this technology.
Great. All right. Any future agenda items, guys?
I've got one. I'm not exactly sure how it might manifest itself, but I've gotten a lot of complaints about the water tower that was suddenly and abruptly erected at the Mather VA. It is, to say the least, an eyesore. It's one of the, one of the sort of ugliest, uglier water towers you might see. It's not well-positioned, well-designed. I mean, structurally, it's probably fine. I don't really understand its purpose. I don't know if there's a federal mandate that they have to have a water tower and they have to have, they also have a giant water tank sitting underneath it. I assume this is like reserve. I looked, I looked for federal contracts. I saw that they had a, they had a pressure in case of power failure sort of request for projects. And someone came up with this water tower idea for them, I suspect. Unfortunately, that could have been done with a pump at ground level. And the water tower is so small, it's not going to provide much backup water because the only, if power's turned off, you still have to pump water up to the water tower to make it properly function. So either way, they, they require a pump operation on-site, probably with a diesel generator or something in case of regional power failure. So I think all of this was avoidable. But the bigger problem is, we don't have an ongoing dialogue with them that would, would help us identify these kind of things before they happen. So now we've got this industrial blight, basically, at Mather, right at the edge of a very nice residential and commercial area. And it just makes no sense to me. It actually angers me that, that we don't have better collaboration on this. So Cyrus, I don't know, or colleagues, how exactly you suggest we deal with this. I certainly think our congressional representative probably is going to need to be involved because we've had a mixed success, basically, in the past of dealing with the VA. Just to be clear, they're a federal facility. They can do whatever they want without any consultation with us on that site. And that's, that's the challenge we face. So I would like to see us have some kind of structured way going forward to be sure this doesn't happen again, or to see if any of this can be, can be mitigated, this sort of industrial stuff that they've dropped right there in a highly visible location.
Thank you, Councilmember Sander. The only thing I can say is that I would be having a conversation with Dr. Stockwell with the VA. And I'll bring the report back to the city council. I think it's likely pointed out, this is a federal facility, so they're not subject to the city rules and policies. They can make those decisions at the federal level. But we hope and expect that they would be good neighbors in discussing these topics. And we can be a partner in helping and assisting them with some potential solutions. So that's a conversation I would be having and I will be bringing the report back to the city council.
All right. Thank you, Cyrus. All right. I'm going to go ahead and close this session and adjourn to closed session. All right. My call is meeting back to order. And Adam, go ahead and report out.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session on three items, existing litigation, anticipated litigation, and a real property transaction. In the two litigation matters, the city council received updates from and provided direction to its litigation council and took no other reportable actions. On the real property item, the city council received information from and provided direction to its real property negotiators and took no further reportable action.
Excellent. Meeting adjourned. Night, guys.
Night.